Hey fellow, you're getting your phone on?
Hello, can you hear me? Okay.
Thanks everyone. We'll just give people a couple more minutes to arrive. Okay fellow, you're live whenever you want. Maybe just start a bit slow, I think people are still arriving. You're gonna do an extended meditation at the end, right? Fifteen minutes?
Yeah, so we'll finish at like one thirtyish. One thirtyish, yeah.
Okay, great. So yeah, you're live, ready to go. Just maybe give it another minute and let people arrive.
Okay, hello everyone. My name is Stella for the guys who are new. Thanks for joining us on the International Day of Yoga. So today's practice is gonna be a blend of asana with pranayama. So what I've designed is a sequence where we kind of connect with our breath. And we'll be doing pranayama in the postures, in the asana practice. Okay, so we're going to find a comfortable seat to begin with. So if you have yoga block, or if you have a little cushion or blanket to sit on, just elevate your pelvis just a little. And then what that does, it helps you to kind of lengthen your lumbar spine, create space in your lower back. And then just begin by sitting up tall, allowing the facial muscles to relax, relax your jaw, relaxing your neck and your shoulders. And then notice if you can pay a special attention to your belly, allow the belly to become nice and relaxed soft. And when you're ready, just closing the eyes and observing the breath moving out, so your exhalation, and observing the breath moving in, inhalation. So you're just closing the eyes and watching the breath, just for a few moments. Observing the length of the breath. Observing the quality of your breath. Notice how you feel after the exhalation, so the sensations in your body, mind. And then noticing how you feel after the inhalation, sensations in the body and mind. So if you're just tuning in, watching yourself. And then just slowly bringing the palms together. And we take a moment to greet and to honour this new day and the energy it offers. We take a moment to greet and honour our community and those who are practising with us today. And we take a moment to greet and to honour the beloved within our hearts. And then slowly bringing your thumbs to touch your forehead. And then here we bow the head to your heart. And then slowly releasing your arms in your way. So we're gonna start with some ujjayi breathing. So those who are not familiar with ujjayi breathing, I will just show you a way you can connect and find ujjayi. So you could just take one hand in front of your face, imagine your hand was a mirror. And then as you breathe on your mirror, you're trying to fog your mirror. So you're gonna open your mouth and you're gonna it's like you're trying to fog the mirror. And then you do that with an inhalation. And then maybe do that a few more times. And then close your mouth and then do the same thing. So you're feeling the glottis and the vocal muscles beginning to constrict just a little bit. And we're producing sound in the base of the throat. So you can close your mouth, bring your hands rest on your lap, and then just take a few deep breaths of ujjayi. And this allows us, this breathing technique will allow us to bring awareness to your breathing. So the sound will help you become aware of your breathing. And then this also works as a natural central heating, it helps to heat up the body gently. So listening to the sound of the breath. Observing the quality of your breath. Feeling the chest and the rib cage broadening and expanding as you inhale. As you exhale, feeling the lower abs and your abdominals contracting and drawing inwards from the exhalation. The inhalation encourages us to really lengthen the spine. So with each inhalation, you're lengthening, the heart lifting. And as you exhale, the heart descends, the pelvis tilts a little. And a few more times as you inhale with that ocean sounding breath. Exhaling, feel the heart descending, the belly lightly contracting. One more breath like this. Beautiful. And then when we're ready, let's take the right fingers, walk your right fingers out to your right. You can come onto your palm, or you could even come down onto your forearm, keeping the left hip down. Take your left arm and extend it over your ear, you can turn your head a little, or you can look down to relax your neck. Opening up on the left side to the left waist, hips, ribs, the whole left side of the body. Continue to breathe with ujjayi breath. We inhale, and then we can come back to the centre. And then slowly walking the left fingers out to the side, you can come down onto your forearm or stay on your hand. Beautiful. And then extend the arm over the ear. So ground your sit bones. And again with your head, if it's comfortable, look down. If you want to work a little stronger, turn the head upwards, reach into your fingers. Ujjayi breath. Listening to the sound of your breath. Observing the quality of your breathing. On your next inhalation, we can come back to the centre. Let's take a gentle twist. So with your right, sorry, with your left hand, bring your left hand onto your knee. Take your right fingers on the floor behind you, inhale, lengthen your spine if you can. Exhale, gently turn through your belly, your ribs, shoulders, possibly the head and neck turning as well. Inhale to lengthen your spine, lifting the chest and the heart. Exhale and gently slowly turn. And then continue with your ujjayi breath. Listening to the sound of the breath, becoming aware of the quality. Inhale, lengthen the spine. Exhale, and then return to the centre. Let's do the same on the other side. So right hand on the left knee, left fingers on the floor behind you. Inhale, lengthen the spine, lift the chest. Exhale, turning through the belly, the ribs, the shoulders, and possibly turning your head and neck all the way over the shoulder. So the inhalation encourages your spine to lengthen and lift. The exhalation encourages the rotation, the twist. Just be gentle right now, you don't have to go too deep. Observing the sensations in your body. Notice where you're tight, notice where you are open. And take a deep inhale breath. Exhale, and let's return to the centre. Fantastic. And then from here, if you're sitting on a cushion or blanket, you can move that to one side. We're gonna come onto all fours. And then from here, we're going to do cat cow posture. And we're gonna do it slightly different. So we're gonna inhale through the nose, you're gonna fill your lungs, and then you're gonna hold the breath for maybe one or two seconds. And then you're gonna exhale through your mouth. Empty completely, draw the navel to the spine, round your back, hold the breath out for one or two seconds. Inhale through the nose. Hold the breath. Exhale through mouth. Navel drawing to the spine, cast your hands and your feet into the floor. Inhale. Exhale. Hold the breath out for a moment. Inhale, filling your lungs. Hold the breath. Exhale. Hold. Inhale. Hold the breath. Exhale. And then do three or four more times on your own, rhythmic and smooth, three or four more times. Moving on your own. And you exhale, just really pull your navel to the spine, rounding the back like an angry cat. Inhale, lift and open your chest, broaden the sitting bone. Exhale, spine lifting into the back of the body, rounding. Inhale, open the chest, broaden the sitting bone, lifting the heart. Let's do one more time. And then bringing your spine to a neutral position. You can take your hands slightly forward, okay? We're gonna come into downward facing dog. So you press your hands into the floor, lifting your hips. And in your downward dog, this first downward dog, let's just take a moment to bend one knee and then straighten the opposite leg. And just alternating sides gently, slowly. So you're kind of warming up your hamstrings and your calf muscles as you bend the knees. And then you might even wanna take your knee over to the opposite side. So I take my left knee over to the right side. With a gentle twist, feel the stretch in the side of the body. And then change and do the same on the other side. It's very gentle. And then when we're ready to do so, come back to the centre. Exhale, and then bend your knees. Inhale, step or jump your feet between your hands, lengthen the spine. You can place your fingers on the floor or bring your hands onto your shins. Exhale, and then take a forward bend, so soften your knees, relax your head and neck. Inhale, and then rising up, taking your arms above the head, ground your feet, lengthen your spine. Look at your thumbs. Exhale, and bring your hands to your heart. Beautiful. So we're gonna do sun salutation A. So you stand at the top of your mat. Beautiful. So when we're ready, we're gonna inhale, take the arms over head, reach into your fingers. Exhale, and we're folding forward, listening to the sound of your ujjayi breath. Inhale, lifting halfway. Exhale, step back. Come into plank. Inhale, plank. And then exhale, lower down. So you could bring your knees, chest, chin to the floor. Inhale, cobra, it's like so, or upward facing dog, by lifting your body and your legs off the floor. Exhale, downward facing dog. We stay in the downward dog for about five long breaths. So you can, grounding your hands, grounding your feet. The heels and the inner legs moving back, five moving back. And then lifting your hips. Relax your head and neck. Ujjayi breath. Exhale, and again bend your knee. Inhale, jump or step your feet between your hands. Lengthen your spine. Exhale, take a forward bend, soften your knees. Inhale, and then we're rising up, reaching, reaching into the fingers, lengthen the spine, look to your front. Exhale, lower the arms. Second round, inhale, reaching up. Ground your feet, lengthen. Exhale, forward bend. Inhale, lengthen the spine. Exhale, plank. Inhale, plank. And then exhale, knees, chest, chin to the floor, or you move your chest forward and then lower all the way down. Inhaling, upward dog or cobra. Exhale, downward facing dog. And again, five breaths here, grounding your hands and your feet, press your hands down and flatten forward. Lift your hips. Take your heels back, and your inner legs, unified, moving back. Quadriceps are firm. Ujjayi breath, you're listening to the sound of your breath. Exhale, and then bend the knee. Inhale, step or jump your feet between your hands. Lengthen your spine, inhale, exhale, boarding forward. Inhale, and then rise up, ground your feet, reaching into your fingertips, lengthen your spine. Exhale, bringing your hands to your heart. One more time, inhale, rise up, grounding the feet. Exhale, forward bend. Inhale, lifting your chest, lengthen your spine. Exhale, plank. Inhale, plank. And then as you exhale, if you're happy with chaturanga, you could go chaturanga, or cut them all the way down to the floor. Inhale, upward dog or cobra. Exhale, downward facing dog. And again, press your hands down and slightly forward, grounding them, ground your feet. Unified, moving back, heels moving back, relax your head and neck. Ujjayi breath. Observing the cadence of your breath. Observing your breathing pattern. Ocean sounding breath. Exhaling, we're going to bend the knees. Inhale, jump or step your feet between your hands. Lengthen your spine halfway, exhale, forward bend. Inhale, and then rising up, reaching into your fingers, grounding your heels, lengthen your spine. Exhale, lowering the arms. Inhale, reach up through your fingers. Exhale, take a forward bend. Inhale, lengthen your spine, beautiful. As we exhale, we're going to step the left foot back. Beautiful. And then come onto the ball of your left foot and your toes. Bring your right knee above the ankle, and then slowly come up into a high lung. So you can bring your hands onto your hips. Press your foot down and slightly forward, lift your chest. Those lower ribs moving in. Beautiful. Inhale, taking the arms up, reach up through your fingertips. And then as we exhale, we're going to lower that left knee towards the floor. So we exhale, and then bring that knee to the floor, keep the left buttocks firm, inhale, and then re-straight. And then exhale. And then exhale, knee coming down to the floor. Inhale and re-straight. And then we do three more times. Staying with your breath. Lightly touching the floor, one more time. Beautiful. Exhale, bring your hands to the floor. Inhale, step forward. Lengthen the spine well. Good. And then exhale, step your right leg back. And then same again, we come up, bring the hands onto the hips. Come on onto the ball of your right foot, keep that right leg nice and strong and steady. When you're happy to here, reach up through your fingers. Exhaling and then lower the knee towards the floor. Inhale, rising up. Exhale, bend the knee. Inhale, straighten, three more times. Moving with your breath, last one. Good. And then exhale, bring your hands to the floor. Inhale, step forward, lengthen your spine. Exhale, let's step the left foot back. Same again, we're going to come into a twisting lunge here. So take your right foot to the edge of your mat. Bring your left hand onto the other side of your mat. You can bring your palm onto the floor. As we inhale, we take the right arm all the way up, reach up. Exhale and then lower the arm, lower the head, coming down. Inhale, reach up through the arm, turn, look to the hand. Exhale and then lower down. Beautiful. Three more times, inhale. And then the last one, we hold, we inhale, we come up, we hold it, reach up. Strong back leg. If you need to bring your knee down and do, there was your knee on the floor, you can come here and there was your knee on the floor. And then exhale, lower your arm. Step forward. Lengthen the spine, lift your chest halfway. And then as we exhale, we're going to step that right foot back. And then taking the left foot to the edge of your mat. The right hand on the other side on the edge. Inhale, reach up. Exhale and then lower the head, lower the arm. Inhale and then reaching up, keep that back leg strong. Exhale, lower the head and lower the arm, three more times. Listening to the sound of your ujjayi breath. And then the last one, inhale. We stay here. If you need to bring your knee to the floor, you can also bring your knee to the floor here and then just hold it, breathe. Beautiful. And then as we exhale, bring the hands to the floor, inhale, step forward. Lengthen your spine, lift chest. Exhale, take a forward bend, relax the head and neck. Inhale and then rising up to the arms overhead. Exhale and bring your hands to your heart, beautiful. So this next one, we're going to do, we're going to do the chair posture or power posture. With the breath of fire. Yeah? So breath and fire looks like this. I'll just give you a little demonstration, show how you do it. So you're going to breathe forcefully through your nostrils and your belly is going to kind of rise up. When we're breathing, just think about the exhalation, the inhalation will happen automatically. So it's like this. Yes, a short rapid burst of exhalation, the inhalation happened automatically. Yeah? So we do like this, we're going to bend your knees. Going to come into the chair posture and reach up through the arms. And we're going to do for thirty. Inhale, hold the breath. Exhale, lower your arms, straight legs. Be still for a moment. Breathe. Observing the sensations, breathing. Okay, so the second round, we have some options here. So you can do the same again, yeah? Or you can make, increase the intensity by coming up onto the balls of your feet. So you can lift your heel, lift your heels, come onto the balls of your feet. Come back into that pious posture, your chair posture, take your arms up again. And then we begin. Exhale, empty. Hold. Release the heels, inhale. Exhale, lower the arms. Hold. Just take a moment and still breathe, observing the sensations in the body. Okay, so we come back to the fronts of your mat, we're going to do sun salutation B. And then we'll go for it slowly and then you would go for it with your own pace. So we begin like this. Bend the knees or katastana, reach into the finger. Exhale, bring your hands to the floor, forward bend. Inhale, lengthen your spine, fingers on the floor or shin. Exhale, jump or step back into plank. Inhale, plank. Exhale, chaturanga or knees, chest, chin to the floor. Inhale, cobra or upward facing dog. Exhale, downward facing dog. We inhale, we take the right leg up, point the toe, grounding your left heel. Exhale, step your right foot between your hands. Bring the left heel onto the floor, so you turn your toes out. And then virajasana one, inhale, reach up. Look to your thumbs. So here, you're turning your left side of your body to face forward. You're rotating, grounding your feet, strengthening the legs. Exhale, bring your hands to the floor. Chaturanga, knees, chest, chin. Upward dog or cobra, you decide. Exhale, downward facing dog. Inhale, take the left leg up, point the toe, grounding the right heel. Exhale, step the foot forward. And again, place the left heel down. Inhale, reaching to your fingers. Look to your thumbs. Right side of the body moving forward. Ground your feet to strengthen your legs. And then exhale, slowly and gently coming into chaturanga. Or knees, chest, chin to the floor. Inhale, cobra or upward dog. Exhale, downward dog. And same again, inhale, right leg up. Exhale, step the right foot forward. Inhale, rising up, virajasana one. Exhale, chaturanga, knees, chest, chin, cobra, upward dog. So we're going to do four more times like that in your own pace, slowly in your own pace. Left leg goes up. Exhale to come forward. Inhale, so just fluid movement. Moving with your breath. You decide which option you want, chaturanga, knees, chest, chin, upward dog or cobra. Three more times. Ujjayi breath. Two more times. Opening up the whole of your body with your breath and your movement. One more time. And then from downward dog, and your last one. Step or jump your feet between your hands. Lengthening the spine, whenever you're ready. Forward fold. Inhale, katastana, bend your knees, reaching up, last one. And exhale, slowly coming back into katastana, take a moment and breathe. Trying to sweat here, it's getting warm. So again, listening to the sound of the ujjayi breath. When you stand, can you be perfectly still, try not to fidget? Watching the body, the breath, observing the state of your mind. The next posture is warrior two. So from here, we're going to step the right leg back. Okay, and then the right feet toe, sorry, I made a mistake. So your left leg back, sorry, left leg back, right foot facing forward. And then turn your left toes in just a little, beautiful. And then we extend the arms and as we exhale, we're going to go into warrior two. Extend the arms. So we're going to do a little breathing here, we're going to inhale. And then exhale slowly. And then inhale for four, one, two, three, four. Exhale, one, two, three, four. Inhale, one, two, three, four, five. Exhale, one, two, three, four, five. Inhale, one, two, three, four, five, six. Exhale, one, two, three, four, five, six. Inhale, straight leg, lower your arms, keep your arms in range. Okay, we're going to do the same on the other side. So you turn the right toes in, take the left leg all the way out. Good. And then when you're ready, extend the arms, exhale. Inhale. And exhale. Inhale, one, two, three, four. Exhale, one, two, three, four. Inhale, one, two, three, four, five. Inhale, one, two, three, four, five. Exhale, one, two, three, four, five. Inhale, one, two, three, four, five, six. Exhale, one, two, three, four, five, six. Inhale, straight leg, beautiful, lower the arms. Lovely. Good. Turn your right leg all the way out once again. Beautiful. Yeah. So we're going to go into parshva, corna, or side angle posture. So we're ready, same, same breathing system. We're going to exhale, bend the knee, bring your forearm onto the thigh or maybe bring your hand on the floor on the outside of your foot, you decide. Good. And then we take the left arm over the head. Exhale. Inhale, one, two, three, four. Exhale, one, two, three, four. Inhale, one, two, three, four, five. Exhale, one, two, three, four, five. Inhale, one, two, three, four, five, six. Exhale, one, two, three, four, five, six. Inhale, coming all the way up. Exhale, release your arm. Turn your feet facing the opposite direction, all the way out. Good. And again, when you're ready, exhale, bend the knee, bring your forearm onto the thigh or onto the floor with your fingers. Inhale, float the arm over the head. Exhale. Inhale, one, two, three, four. Exhale, one, two, three, four. Inhale, one, two, three, four, five. Exhale, one, two, three, four, five. Inhale, one, two, three, four, five, six. Exhale, one, two, three, four, five, six. Inhale, slowly coming all the way up. Inhale, slowly coming all the way up. Turn your feet, as they say. Bring your hands into your waist. Take a moment here. Good, so we're going to move on to trickle nata. So we're going to turn the right foot out, all the way out. Left toes in just a little, heels are in line. Inhale, reach out through your fingers. Reach over to your right side. And then bring your hand down onto the shin. Take the left arm up. Yeah, and then from here, we're going to exhale, bend both of your knees. And then bring your hand under, left arm coming under the thigh. Ground your feet. Inhale, open up, straighten both legs and then reach up again into trickle nata. Good, and then again exhale, bending your knees. Ground your feet, bring your hand under your right thigh. Inhale, and again, opening up, it's like a flower. Open the flower, reach up. Exhale, closing the flower, bending both knees, lower your head. Beautiful, inhale, and again, reaching into your fingers, opening up in that flower. Turning up. And again, exhale, bend your knees. Put your arm down, one more time. Inhale, and then reaching up. Let's hold here. Inhale. One, two, three, four. Exhale, one, two, three, four. Rui, take your hand a little bit higher. Good, and exhale. Good, reaching up. And then inhale, sorry, one, two, three, four, five, six. Exhale, one, two, three, four, five, six. Look to the floor. Inhale, and then coming all the way up. Good, raise your hand. Turning the right foot in. Return to the other side. Heels are in line, take a moment here. Good, when you're ready, extend your arms. Good, so just a little note, try not to bring your hand too low down. So if you try to bring your hand to your ankle, what tends to happen? Your body tends to collapse. So bring your hand slightly higher, so you've got a lot of space in your body. So maybe just below your knee, you can really open up the body. Okay, so when we're ready, we reach out to the left. Bring the hand onto the shin bone. Good, and then as we exhale, bend your knee, both knees, and then take your arm under the thigh, under the left thigh. Inhale, straighten the legs and really open up, reach into your fingers. Exhale, and again, bending the knee. Closing as you come down. Inhale, and then again, open up. Stretching your fingers. And then let's do one more time. Exhale, bending the knees, closing. Ground your feet. Inhale, and again, feel your feet grounding as you reach up. Good, and then inhale, one, two, three, four. Exhale, one, two, three, four. Inhale, one, two, three, four, five. Exhale, one, two, three, four, five. Inhale, one, two, three, four, five. Exhale, one, two, three, four, five. Big, and then inhale, slowly coming up. Beautiful, turning your feet. Good, let's step to the front of your mat. So just come back to standing in katasana. Breathe. Just notice how you feel observing. And breathing. Let's inhale, take the arms overhead, reaching into the fingers. Exhale, take them forward, bend. Inhale, and again, lengthen the spine, lift chest. Exhale, step back into plank. Inhale plank. And then as you exhale, we're going to lower down to the floor. So we come all the way down onto the floor. Beautiful, and then you're going to bring your forearms onto the floor and you're going to place your elbow underneath your shoulder. So we're going to do a forearm plank. So from here, so what we're doing, we're going to do forearm plank. And then in the forearm plank, we're going to breathe with the breath of fire. Yeah, so the breath we did earlier. So short, rapid exhalations, okay? So when we're ready, we place the forearms down, curl the toes. Good, and then lifting up. Press your hands and feet, and then when we're ready. Exhale, and then come into plank. So come all the way up into plank, and then again. Exhale, and then slowly come back down, forearm plank. And again. Inhale, coming up into plank. Last time. And then bring your knees to the floor. Beautiful. Let's come to sit with a cross leg. You could again, sit on your blanket if you need to. The simple cross leg, whichever, whichever comfortable seating posture for you, whichever works for you, you come into. And we're going to do a little breathing exercise called a calling breathing exercise. The doctor just spoke about that a little bit earlier. Shikali Kaniyama, okay? I'm going to explain to you how we do it. So. And we're going to roll our tongue like this. So your tongue will look like this, I'll show you. I'll come a little bit closer, maybe you can see my tongue. So you do it like this. You kind of roll the tongue and then what you're doing, you're going to breathe from top. Not everyone can do that, it's a genetic thing. So if it doesn't, if it doesn't work for you, yeah, not everyone can roll the tongue like so. And if that doesn't work for you, then what you're going to do, you're going to imagine that you're breathing from a straw. Imagine you're taking. Imagine you're breathing from a straw and. Yeah, but if you, if you can roll your tongue, you're going to roll your tongue. Now watch me. And I'll show you what it looks like. So just take a moment. So we're going to do it like this, we're going to keep the head down, roll your tongue. Inhale. Tongue in, exhale through the nostril. As you lower your head, and again, roll your tongue. Inhale. Tongue comes in, exhale through the nostrils. As you lower your chin. So you're going to do that nine times, okay? So on your own, nine times. Inhale through the road, tongue lifting the head. Tongue in, exhale through your nostrils. As you lower your head. You're kind of cooling after doing those very fiery plank, forearm plank. You've just got to cool that inner heat. And when you've done that nine times, just come to sit completely still. With your spine upright. And just sit for a few moments. Just sit for a moment. And then the second exercise we're going to do is the Tibetan purification breathing, okay? So we'll do the first few rounds together. And then you'll continue on your own, okay? So when you're ready, sitting up tall. And then as we inhale, we take the right arm. We're going to take the right arm all the way up. Inhale. Hold the breath. Lower your arm. And then use your thumb or any finger to close your right nostril. Exhale, left side. Lower your elbow towards your ribs. Hold the breath out. And then lower your arm. Inhale, left arm up. Filling the lungs completely. Hold the breath. Lower the arm. Closing the left nostril. Exhale, right side. Left elbow moving to ribs. Holding the breath out, lower your head. Right side, inhale, reaching into the fingers. Filling lungs. Hold the breath. Lower the arm. Closing right nostril, exhale left. Hold the breath out, lower your arm. Inhale. Hold. Lower the arm. Closing left nostril, exhale right side. Hold the breath out. Lower your arm, and then continue on your own. So allow your movements to be rhythmic and smooth. Find your own rhythm here. Okay, let's do one more on each side. Closing on your left side. And then once you've completed the sequence. Closing your eyes, just sit still for a few moments. So here we just take a few moments to observe the effects of the breathing exercise. Observing the effects on your, on your physical body, the sensations. Keep observing the effects. And your mind. Observing how your, your breathing has transformed. It may have transformed. For those of you who would like to stay seated upright, remain seated. If you're happy to come into shavasana, then coming into shavasana. And then slowly and gently. Start to bring your awareness back. Into the body. Coming back into the room you're in. And then in your own time, you can slowly move your fingers and your toes. Moving your wrists and your ankles. And then let's take a deep stretch. You can take the arms over head, stretch into your legs and your feet. Lempen, put your spine in traction, limp them. And when you're happy to do so, you can bend your knees. And then rolling onto the right side. And then slowly coming up from your right side. Take a moment, let's just take a moment to sit. And then here we notice or we observe. And that is how we may have. Changed or transformed. Physical level, body. Physical body, energetic body. And your breathing body, your breath, notice how your breath may have transformed. And becoming aware of your. The state of your mind. Your thoughts. And then noticing how. Your consciousness may have shifted. Transformed. And then we slowly bring the palms back to Anjali Mudra in front of the heart. Greeting and honoring all those who shared the practice of us today. Greeting and honoring the beloved within our heart. And then slowly bring your palms to your forehead. Bowing the head to your heart. Wisen. Namaste. Thank you.
Thanks, fella.
Thank you. Thank you, baby.
Thanks, fella. Found it a bit hard today, I don't know why.
It was, it was much harder today as well, so. It was much more intense because on that little survey, everyone's like, we want strong practice.
No, I do like strong example, I think today I was just a bit tired. I overslept, Rajesh.
Oh.
That's why I missed the first 20 minutes of the, which was, I was, I'm just really tired. I think I found the week quite hard this week, it's been quite an intense week for some reason.
There's been a lot going on.
Yeah. So I think I was just really tired and yeah, I woke up with a shock and I thought, oh bloody hell, yeah. So I think I was kind of not quite with it, yeah.
Yeah.
But it was good. He was great though, wasn't he?
This is Harry, thank you. Very good.
Hi, good. I'm, I'm sending out a video, I'm going to be sending out the video of the session today for anyone who missed the beginning of it.
Oh, great, thank you.
I'm gonna just get that. Coded to a smaller format and I'll get that sent out.
Oh, thank you, that'd be great.
Oh. Lovely, fella. It was quite, it was stronger today.
Yeah, well, that's what they wanted, so.
That's what the people demanded.
Yeah, so that's what they want. I could do strong every day, but I think you would only maybe practice once a week then. You know, it's like.
Maybe it's worth doing one strong one, then one for a story tape and one.
I try Tuesday and Saturday tend to be a lot stronger than.
Yeah.
Tuesday class, so.
Yeah.
Kind of medium. Thursdays very, very relaxed and then Saturdays a little bit.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye bye, bye. Bye, Rajesh, bye. Thank you.
How are you, Sam?
How are you guys? It was a really nice Sunday, I'm enjoying it. Great.
Nice.
I like, really liked the, oh yeah, Vedic talk at the beginning and then really nice. This was a nice start today, let's.
Yeah, they're.
No, no, no.
Fascinating.
Yeah, how do we get to talk to that guy again?
Yeah. I've sent an email, Sam, and we're gonna, I'm gonna sort it all out, I think that went really well, didn't it?
Yeah, he was fascinating.
He's such a great guy, I mean, for the last 10, I mean, I met him 10 years ago and he's just, I just. You know, I, I, you know, I see him every year or every other year when I go to Goa, but. I'm on the, I'm on WhatsApp calls all the time and he's just so open and so generous and so. Once he kind of, once you've done a one-on-one with him. And he's sort of spent some time and you do the questionnaire and he looks at your tongue and your heart and he asks you about your habits and how you feel. Then he kind of knows you. And then you can just touch base with him, like, oh, I'm feeling a bit like this or that and he'll be like, oh, you know, you need to get up in the mornings and go for your run. Otherwise the calf is going to be too heavy and you'd be tired and, you know, he just knows. And the thing is, because it's so much about the eyes and complexion and the tongue. Even just across a video call, he can just tell, you know. He just sort of knows how I am because he's. Such a long period of time. He's like, so, I can see you when you're eating tomatoes at night. We'll set it up, I, I'm really glad he's sort of on board and stuff. He's got, he's also, I mean, it's a shame that there's this pandemic because he's. He's opened up a beautiful center. He, in, just outside, actually more inland. Like a really kind of on a river and with like hearts and. I mean, when, when the pandemic opens up, fella, we should think about all going there to India next year.
I'd love to go to India.
Yeah, Doctor, you know, Doctor, because there's so many sort of like. You know, there's a lot of people who. It's just good to have someone like Dr. Rohit because he's Pukka, proper. You know, even, even in Goa, people know him and they're like, you know. He, I, I remember one time I saw Dr. Rohit and there was like some sort of. One of these like battles going on between one group of Goan guys who were renting out site, you know, scooters and. Another group of Goan guys were renting out scooters and they were literally about to have a big gang fight. And then Dr. Rohit came along in his little car. And I just literally watched him sort of drive right into the middle, stop the car, get out of the car and just be like. Just, he just gently chatted with everybody. And within like two minutes, everybody was like hugging and holding hands going, oh, sorry. You're like my brother, what did I do, what am I thinking, I lost my head. You know, he's, he's genuinely like a sort of. I mean, you see, he's very pragmatic, but he's, he's genuinely deeply spiritual, like fella, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Marian.
Yeah.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can.
Just about, is this your first time to, this is your first time to join?
Oh, no. I. Fifth sixth. I know, good.
Okay.
Oh, nice. You're Shari, where's Shari? Show yourself, Shari. Hello? Hi, hi.
You, sorry, couldn't unmute myself. Hi.
Hi, hi, where are you?
Shanghai.
Oh, wow, nice. So nice.
Oh, hi. Sorry.
Hi.
You managed to stay in Shanghai, yeah?
I managed to stay in Shanghai, yes.
Yeah, well, because I, I tried to get back, but I couldn't get back in time.
I got in just before, I went to Thailand, came back, I've hit all the right times.
Okay, how is, how is it there? Is everything back to normal?
Yep, it's pretty much back to normal, but then now they're starting again.
All right. What's starting again?
Well, they've got cases in Beijing, so now.
Okay.
Now, now there's all these scares, so Shanghai's closing up again.
Oh, no.
You know, people from, because they don't want people from Beijing to get in here and they don't know where else. Going to be and they don't know how it started, it might be a market, you know.
A new, a new, a new virus?
A new break.
They're saying they're thinking of wet markets again.
Cool.
It's the same virus, but it's coming from Beijing where everything was supposedly, I mean, Beijing was locked up, you know, so there's. The reason they should have a virus, but.
Oh, that's very, that's very strange.
But they closed, yeah, they closed Haidan. Have you ever been to Haidan, it's like the university district in Beijing.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think I've been there before, yeah.
Well, that's where it started and so that area is all closed down now. Who knows?
Who knows when I will be back then, I don't know. People, maybe at the end of the year, something like that.
I think until we get a vaccination, we're all kind of stuck.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah.
Eric, where are you, Marian, are you in Oslo?
No, I'm in, yeah, south of Oslo, on the coast.
Oh, lovely. Oh. Fella, your head, when are you going to Greece?
I'm going to Greece.
When are you going, yeah?
On the 7th.
We might, we might have a few days, guys, where fella, we might have a week where fella goes offline, but I'm gonna save up some. Recorded classes and release them as live kind of thing. And then we'll have fella sort of in Greece, you know, on an island, doing yoga from there. Rather than his, rather than his mum's house.
Nice. So lucky, I'd love.
Raj?
Yeah?
We lost a few people when we made the shift.
And there were a few people who messaged saying that they had to go.
No, but there were some, I've got some messages on my phone saying they didn't know what the code was.
Oh, it was on the Facebook page and it was in the group chat.
I don't think they were, they did, I don't think they had the Facebook.
Oh, sorry, what was that, China friends?
Yeah, there was all the Chinese ones and like starting to get messages, they're like, oh. Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, if they're not on the Facebook or, I did put it in the Zoom chat.
Yeah. But yeah, they must have missed it because when you.
We'll have to make sure, ask them if they want us to send them the class.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
If they want us to send them the class, we can do. I can, I can, I can make the video available to them.
Or give them a link where they can watch it, that might be.
Yeah. Ask them how, ask them, ask them again, you know, again, just which is the best platform to send it, to make it available for them. Vimeo or. Wherever works.
I could see my phone was going, do you do it while I was in the class, but I.
Yeah, we'll have to, if we, if we change like that, we'll have to leave a little, a couple of minutes, let everyone come on board and just have to check before the class starts. I'm not in touch with them, so I can't help with that one.
I mean, when, when you said they were changing, they, I think some people left just before we said we're gonna change.
Oh.
Because we went, oh, we're gonna have a five-minute break and then they went.
Oh.
And then, yeah, we didn't, I don't think we said it in time.
Oh, well.
Yeah.
Happy to, I can send them the link if they want it.
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay.
What are you up to today, Sam?
I'm actually really boring things like go shopping and.
You're gonna do the washing?
Walking. The reason, yeah.
Fella, I'm gonna make you host and I'm gonna head.
I was the park yesterday.
It was nice, yeah, I got there and they were all going.
They were all going.